Okay, hey, Chumbas, welcome. Oh, that's my camera. Welcome, Chumbas. How are you? Thank you so much for joining us. Night City Council is in session. I'm John John the Wise and I have with me the illustrious Mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hutt. How you doing, James?
I'm doing great. Thanks for having me as always.
Of course.
How are you doing, John John?
I'm good, man. I'm good. Um, I've been playing some games here and there. I haven't been able to play Cyberpunk Red in a little while, which has got me bummed out. So I need to, I need to fix that somehow.
Well, you're also only at episode two of the new Edgerunners anime.
No, no, I'm at episode five, six. I'm at episode six.
You're at six. You're at episode... Alright, that's a little more respectable.
Yeah.
So you do have a little couple more episodes to help take the edge off.
Yeah, exactly. So for today's docket for Night City Council, Chooms, we had, we're gonna be talking about the Edgerunner anime. Uh, we're gonna answer some questions and we're also gonna talk about the Tales of the Red extra content, Tales of the Red Plus, excuse me, extra content for Tales of the Red Street Stories. It's a DLC released by Artel Solarian Games at their DLC spot, free. Absolutely free.
It's a free DLC, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, the Tales of the Red book is also available at their web store. You can get it digitally already. I believe you could buy the physical copy now. That's right. Um, I'm waiting for Alliance to send it to my shop so I can get my copy.
It's shipping times still borked, but...
I know, I know.
They're in the mail.
It is what it is. It's the same story, new day. But um, it's all good. We're doing that. Also, we wanted to mention that Cyberpunk Red Easy Mode is out.
Yes.
Available drive-through RPG. Is it on your website too?
Uh, yes, it's listed as a free DLC.
There you go. It's listed as a free DLC. It is an amazing resource for just getting started and playing Cyberpunk. It came out... Yeah, it came out for...
It's great for new players.
Yeah, it came out for Free RPG Day and um, I got to take a look at it, went to my local shop, looked at it, and it has so much in it. Literally, that's all you need to play. You and your buddies can just start playing right there. So yeah, go ahead and grab that and play some Cyberpunk at home. Um, yeah, so there's that. Let's talk about the anime, dude. We're talking about Cyberpunk Edgerunners. This is the new anime from Studio Trigger, set in the Cyberpunk 2077 universe. It is a 10-episode, one-shot, basically anime on Netflix. How amazing is it, James?
It's everything we could have ever wanted. Um, everybody's happy about it. It's, it's a, you know, you, it's a, just a home run of a darn thing. It couldn't have gone any better.
Yeah, uh, also, we're not gonna be talking spoilers here, so don't worry, guys.
It's a good anime. I, well, I'm a big anime fan. It's a good anime. Uh, I love Studio Trigger. It's, this has been like, um, like, ever since we first heard about it, this has been like, I cannot wait, I cannot wait, I cannot wait. And all, and even though I was like that the whole time, it was still worth the wait.
Yeah.
And uh, I am, I'm very happy. Needless to say.
Yeah, I'm not even a heavy anime enthusiast, um, as much as some folks. I like anime, of course. Uh, but this is absolutely a home run. I think from the first episode, they, they nailed it. They're like, okay, this is what the story is, this is what Cyberpunk is, this is what differentiates it from other types of Cyberpunk. This is what this world is. And I'm like, yeah, dude, nailed it. Boom.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is really difficult. I mean, if you think about it, you're taking an established story, you're making a new story, but that just shows you how versatile the Cyberpunk, uh, Cyberpunk 2020 Red, that Mike Bondsmith Cyberpunk, how versatile it is. And you can literally just inject characters in an area and make an amazing story.
I would be remiss not to, not to bring up at this point. It also shows how skilled Studio Trigger is at making great anime. Um, it's top, top tier. Uh, I fully, you know, I'm fully 100% on the train and uh, y'all, y'all should go see it.
Yeah, 100%. I hope that it brings more people to the hobby. You know, they see the anime and then they're like, "I wanna try out the tabletop game. That'll be really cool."
Anything that's good for the, it all trickles down, right?
Yeah, of course. Uh, if everybody's into Cyberpunk, we're all gonna win, cuz it's our favorite hobby. Um, so, talking about the anime, what are some things that stands out about it that really just tickled you?
Oh, um, so one of the things I really like is that um, in a, um, there are a lot of really uh theatrical elements in the Cyberpunk, uh, in Cyberpunk Red, Cyberpunk 2020, Cyberpunk Story, Cyberpunk 2077, um, that can't really be dealt justice unless they're in a cinematic medium. It's not to say that games can't tell stories, it's just there are specific kinds of stories that are better as a comic book or better as a movie. Um, here, we got a, we got a, like, a really specific story and we got to see it all the way through and it's got, um, you know, this body and uh, and then of course, I love all the crispy bits at the edges, right? I love that the backgrounds are so well done, um, that they cared so deeply about uh, the setting uh, and they really got it right. Anyway, I, I like everything about it, so it's hard for me to pick one thing. Um, the nerd in me loves the crispy bits around the edges, the little detailed nuggets and the uh, the, the like, the lover of great stories in me loves the uh, um, loves the pacing of their narrative and uh, how it doesn't rush, but it also doesn't lag. Anyway, great character shoot. Love that.
The characters are all amazing. They're all interesting. They all have quirks. Uh, there's nothing like a super cliche about them, like, all of them have depth. That's what's interesting about it is they were able to pay homage to the video game 2077 and to the tabletop universe. And I think they did such a good job making sure that both elements were in, like, when he gets the phone call, it's the same call, like, as the game. There's a Delamain in there, you know, stuff like that.
And little, little details that are awesome.
Yeah, and then in episode one, you're introduced to like, basically every single element that of what, it's like an elevator pitch for the game, basically, like the tabletop game. If somebody wants to know, like, "Oh, what's it about?", I'd be like, "Dude, watch that first episode of that anime", and that's what the game is.
It, yeah, that, I mean, that's a great, uh, it's another great way of getting people uh, into the uh, the, "Okay, what are we doing here?", um, especially if you have a player that's like, maybe not read the book uh, all the way through or is, is here for a good time, not a long time, uh, then it's, it's fun because, hey, watch this episode of the show, right? It's not homework.
Yeah.
How could it be?
No, it's not. It's like, and go along for this ride, enjoy it, and then come back when you have questions, cuz I know you will.
Sure.
You're gonna be, "What the hell is Max Tech and how do I join?" Oh man, they did such a good job with all that. Um, what about the uh, dude, I was gonna ask you this. In all your years playing Cyberpunk, did you ever think to put three eyes on the side of somebody and how cool does that look?
Mm-hmm.
That's in, I'm not gonna give away who it was, but the first, the first time I saw that, I was like, "Oh my god, that's so genius." I never thought about it and it looks so good. So...
The multi optic mount is meant to do all manner of stories like that and we've been playing with eye layouts for a while and, but that one is a, I mean, they have professional character designers, you know? Not exactly my area of expertise.
Yeah.
I look at a jumping spider and go, "Looks good to me. Do it like this."
Yeah, they, it's like...
You know, they're, they're doing sketches and poring over drafts and stuff and they, they've got the big guns on it. I'll put it that way.
Yeah, and like, it seems like somebody went into the office and said, "Hey, style over substance", and they're like, "Say less", and they just went with it, dude.
I mean, it's, it's... Alright, it's, it's, there's like two great marriages here. There's the marriage of like, Cyberpunk has always had a, uh, sort of like a Japanese inspirations in it, especially 2020. 2020's full of that. And um, and you know, we're getting an anime, right? That's the first marriage. It's close to the culture and it's, it's being done by the culture, right? You can't, that's worth its weight in gold.
It's full circle, dude. It's full circle.
This anime is the type of anime that Trigger would be good at making and we got Trigger!
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? Not only do we get the right, the cultural element, coming full circle, we get the detail, uh, like punchy punk element that they have.
Yeah.
It, it was just perfect business decision, right?
Yeah, it's one of those things that like, we're all happy that it happened exactly the way it happened uh, on every aspect of it. It's a home run, like you said. So it sounds like we're shilling for this anime, but I'm telling you guys, like, it's that, it's seriously that good. It's like...
I mean, how much do you need to show for an anime that you already got on Netflix?
I know, they're like, "We get it. You like the game."
For Netflix now? No, no, no. We like good things.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so yeah, that's our resounding...
Call it never violent.
Yeah, well, okay, I'll give, I'll give one gripe for the anime. How about that? I'll give one, one gripe.
You can give the gripe, I'm not.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're not required to give a gripe. I'm a man of the people. I'm gonna give my gripe. The only one thing that I have a gripe about, which is so miniscule and small, is they go around saying like, "Oh, you're a cyberpunk" or "This guy's a cyberpunk." I just, I've never heard that said. I've never heard that thrown around. That's like the, it's like saying you are the, you know what I mean? Uh, it's, it's a dumb little gripe. It's not even a big deal.
It's like being in a fantasy setting and having them call you an adventurer.
Or, you know, saying, "Are you, are we gonna go and fight Dungeons and Dragons?", you know? Like, somebody, "You said the thing", you know what I mean? That kinda thing.
Yeah, I, I think, okay, I think that needs to be there because of general public and that's, you may not like it, but that's gonna do more for you than you think.
No, no, I know. It's saying, like I said, it's a stupid little gripe. It didn't take away from the story or anything like that. It wasn't like, "Oh, I'm turning this off."
You don't need that, but it's gonna help you in a, in a roundabout way.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the other thing is they touch on what, the, the correct terminology, actually, the correct terminology would be Edgerunners, but that's the name of the show, so it's like, they're already touching on that anyway, so... So yeah, anyway, that's it. That's literally my only gripe. Everything else is great. Uh, art style, action. I, I, did you do sub or dub, by the way? Uh, this is gonna affect us.
Um, so I wanted to see the sub first, just cuz that's all, how I've always watched Trigger's stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but I'm gonna go back and uh, watch the, watch the sub, watch the, watch the dub.
I'm a dub guy. I used to be a sub guy back in the day. I stopped wanting to read. Uh, and now I'm a dub guy, but the dubbing is great. It's really well done.
I'm glad. And you gotta go finish the anime too. He hasn't even finished the...
I got four more episodes. A big thing was spoiled to me because of the Discord that I, I'm an admin of. Yeah, yeah, it doesn't matter. I was like, "Oh, so that happens. That's great. Okay." Cuz I have all access to all our channels and I have a spoiler channel and I'm like, "Alright, guys, don't look at the spoiler channel", but as an admin, you see it no matter what. So yeah, it's fun. So anyway, uh, that's my fault for not binging the whole thing on the first day. That's what I should have done. Alright, that's it for the anime.
I'm amazed, I'm so amazed you didn't.
I know, I know.
Like, you just went to, you just went like, "Hmm, I feel tired. I think I'll sleep."
I know, I know. So we're, we're gonna be rating the anime as a super luxury item. Uh...
Oh. Extreme.
Extreme. Extreme.
Luxury, but we're gonna, we're gonna... One more, Ian. One more.
Exotic luxury. Ultimate luxury. Uh, alright, let's talk about this new DLC. How about that, James?
Yes.
Tales of the Red extra content, uh, for Tales of the Red Street Stories. This is basically uh, deleted stuff or something. What's, what is this thing?
So this is content that we couldn't fit into the book for Tales of the Red, because Tales of the Red was a really big project with a lot of different, uh, a lot of different um, awesome writers coming together to make Tales of the Red. Uh, and uh, when you end up doing that, you get a lot of stuff that, you know, couldn't fit in a sidebar or we would have had to have a page with like, only this thing and then a full blank page. Um, and uh, or uh, things that were, were, you know, cut. Um, so this is just everything uh, that uh, that we couldn't put in. Um, and uh, it exists as a, as a way to like, you'll get the book and then this is the, this is the sort of deleted scenes. Um, but there's also stuff in here that helps you. Um, for example, um, it will help you run it on a VTT, I think.
Yeah, there's uh, battle maps in here. A lot, actually. There's a lot of battle maps, really beautifully done. Was this done by Loki?
I don't know off the top of my head and I don't wanna discredit anybody.
Yeah, let me look at the beginning, cuz the credits should be there.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep going.
Uh, and uh, there is something to be said about just getting more Cyberpunk battle maps. There are a lot of uh, you know, like, 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 it's hard to get a Cyberpunk, it's one of the hardest things to get if you're playing a VTT is to find cool Cyberpunk battle maps to use. So just treat this as a free Cyberpunk battle maps if you want. Um...
There's also NPCs stats.
There's the 20 things. Um, and uh, that's excellent. Uh, I don't, I think, no, that wasn't collecting the random.
Yeah, no, this one has more vendors at the RC Night Market. Um, it has additional NPC stats, their names and all their skills. And some more bonus content. There's some more extra lore. There, it's like Night City News Today, Night City Today News Articles for Adventure Seeds. Um, and then uh, and then just a bunch of battle maps. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 12 pages of battle maps. And then the final page is...
Some of that.
Yeah, I think you guys will get some.
To do with it.
I mean, ju, for 12 battle maps for free, that's amazing. Uh, set in the universe of your favorite game.
Yeah, just enjoy those.
And um...
Have a good time, you know? Come back next month.
There, at the... Sorry, go ahead.
No, no, it's all...
I was saying that the, the final page is uh, NPC tokens as well. A full page of NPC tokens.
That was the part I was thinking about. I thought it was like, "There's one more thing. I don't remember what it is." Uh, it's, yes, NPC token.
Yeah, there you go.
So um, recommend to anyone planning on grabbing that. Might as well pick up the free DLC. It is free, doesn't cost any money. And uh, enjoy.
Yeah.
Uh, there's not really much to say about it, uh, without possibly spoiling adventures.
Yeah, it's just extra content, basically. If you have the book or if you don't have the book, either way, you can benefit greatly from it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, um, wanted to mention again, uh, we also did uh, release uh, the uh, the Easy Mode for Cyberpunk Red as a free DLC. Um, so uh, that one is uh, that one's good for uh, getting those, well, one, you can get a taste of Cyberpunk Red uh, if you don't have the book yet. And uh, two, if you do have the book, you can still run the adventure I wrote in the back, which is a uh, which is a great um, like tone-setting first adventure.
Yeah.
And it deals with uh, cops, cuz we don't really have that many um, cop stories.
Yeah, that's great. Uh, that, you can have that adventure. There's also uh, pre-generated characters. So if you just wanna basically take that Easy Mode PDF, call up your buddies and say, "Hey, we're playing Cyberpunk. Don't worry, I got everything ready to go."
There you go.
Yeah, and that's it. Alright, so that's it for the DLC. Uh, let's go to questions.
Excited.
We have some questions here. Um, we have three questions. And that's it. So if you guys have more questions you wanna submit, you're johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. That's where you guys can send it over. Send it for Night City Council. Put that in the subject line, so I know exactly what it's for, and I'll put it in here. If I missed your question somehow, please resend it. Um, I apologize if that happened. It might have like, got mixed up with my email and stuff like that. So if you guys had submitted questions and I never mentioned them, resubmit them, please, and I apologize. Alright, here we go. Hello, Night City Council. I was wondering how you use world maps in your games. I'm a DND DM, just getting into Cyberpunk Red. In DND, I've always gone overboard with my world maps, so I always know specifically where the players are and can show them as well. This seems like a bigger undertaking in Cyberpunk considering the differences in setting. I'm thinking maybe just general descriptions, like a warehouse in the north side of Haywood might suffice, but it feels like, a bit like I'm admitting defeat. Would love to hear you guys' thoughts. Thank you for the videos. Just binged all of them past week and I've loved the insight from Brady Hargit. Thank you so much, Brady.
So um, let me, I'm gonna try to help here. Um, so Night City uh, is uh, sometimes we internally refer to it as a, uh, it's meant to be a theme park, right? There's meant to be everything that you could want in a Cyberpunk story in one city, and that's Night City. Um, so that you can tell whatever story you want as a GM and um, and you know, make it your own. Um, the, if you want to do like, um, so what I recommend is knowing the neighborhoods and what the neighborhoods are sort of like. Looking at the um, in the book, there's a pushpin map of locations. Knowing what those important locations are, cuz those are like main story, sort of um, fleshed out locations. Um, then maybe I would take the um... If you want another level of detail there, I would take the carbon containers and cube hotels, free DLC available on our website, um, as an additional pushpin layer on that city map. Uh, and sort of say, "Hey, these are where these types of things are", and then you can extrapolate new pushpins for your story that you wanna run in that map, so that you know locations on top of those. Um, so at that point, you're gonna have more than 30 locations likely uh, across an entire city that's across more than 10 um, districts in that city. Um, I think at that point, if your players are looking for something specific, um, they're likely doing something that you didn't plan for in the, in the campaign or, you know, like, you tell them, "Hey, these are these types of things." Um, you know, here's, here's some key locations, and then they say, "I wanna find a place that does this." That's really, uh, you can never pre-plan for that type thing. Um, if somebody says, "I wanna go get a slice of pizza", you don't need to have a pizzeria on your map. It's sorta on you to, to put that pizzeria wherever you want. Um, if they're like, "Okay, you wanna, you guys want me to go nearby?" Or you, what I like to do is when somebody does something that I don't expect, I like to ask them in a way their intention. Like, so for the pizza bit, if somebody said, "Uh, I wanna go get a slice of pizza. This was a really hard mission", uh, I ask, "Well, are you, you know, you wanna go nearby? You wanna go try to get something cheap? Uh, you wanna get something high-end?", you know? And if they wanna go high-end, maybe send them to Little Italy, right? Uh, if they wanna go nearby, I put a pizza joint nearby and I try to run some sort of scene there that will hook them into another thing. Um, but anyway, um, that is the level of the, I, I want, I wanna tell you that it's not admitting defeat. Give people a pushpin map of key locations across the city, as long as um, your narrative or just straight up telling them uh, is telling them, "Hey, this is what makes these parts of the city different from one another", cuz once they know that, then they're gonna put that into their role-playing. And basically, um, they'll sort of ask for pushpins to be put in the map and then you either improvise them or you're like, "That would fit into this", um, them. Uh, but uh, I don't think, I don't think it's admitting defeat to not be able to be prepared for relocation. I do not think a street-level uh, map of Night City would be, it would be information overload and it would be un-GM-able. Um, that's a, that's a, that's a wild uh, undertaking. Um, and if you do want more detail and you don't wanna come up with areas in the city yourself, I would recommend buying um, Night City, the Night City Sourcebook for 2020 and reverse-engineering the ideas in there into new locations in Red. That is my full answer.
Wonderful answer. Great insight, great advice. Uh, piggybacking on the Night City Sourcebook, I also second that. I'll get straight to it. Uh, I do wanna mention that if you're watching this at the time of this recording, I just released a book, uh, uh, I'm sorry, a book, a video talking about playing outside of Night City and my insight on it, because my campaign takes place in Texas. It's my own homebrew world. But I also talk about in the video why Night City is such a great place to play in and why I'll always be playing in Night City from now until forever. Um, so check that out if you wanna, if you want some insight on that. The other thing I will mention about the Night City Sourcebook, it is absolutely wonderful. It, it might be one of the best sourcebooks ever made for any game ever. It has detailed maps about the different districts, what's going on in them, down to like, what stores are exactly on the map. And if you notice, there's some squares that don't have anything written out on them and that was obviously done on purpose, because the idea is you're gonna fill in those gaps. You know, they'll tell you that there's four different liquor stores, but that doesn't, doesn't mean Night City only has four liquor stores. So it's up to you to fill in those other gaps. So definitely do that. Night City Sourcebook, really good. The Cyberpunk Red Core Rulebook has a Night City map too. Look at both of those books together, fill in some sections, and you got uh, a, a good start. Now, when you wanna fill in those sections, my advice would be, think about what's going on in those areas and who's in control. Night City, it's a city. That means there's territories and where, that, that means whether it's the police taking charge of some territories, there is also booster gangs, corporations, et cetera. Who's the major player in those areas, in those territories? Is it no man's land? Is it contested? Is it, you know, maybe they don't even care about this area? Or is it a combat zone, where basically it's just chaos in the combat zone? So these are aspects that I would focus on when you're filling in uh, the gaps on what's going on in that area. And that way, when your players are traveling through those areas, you have something that you can throw as an obstacle in front of them, cuz you're like, "Oh yeah, there's a big triad war going on right here", so of course the players are gonna run into that if they go through here. So that's my advice. That's my insight. I think with James and I's answer, you got everything you need.
I, I think you bring up a really good point about that faction layer. Um, you can use that faction layer to make like, any environment they go to interesting. Like, you can, if they go to a, a corner store, right? You can have it be a corner store where members of the Piranhas like to hang out. And now it's, it's suddenly an interesting location, um, that has plot-relevant hooks, right? Um, I, I think that's a, keeping an eye toward like, how are the factions interacting with the world in this area? That's smart and uh, that is an impulse that, when you're improvising, is going to pay dividends.
Yeah, and you know, what you do with DND is not different, you know, with uh, what you're gonna do in Cyberpunk. The dwarves are taking care of this territory in the mountains and they're at war with the elves. That's nothing different than what you would do in Cyberpunk. You know, you just replace the factions and add some cyberware. There you go. Alright, okay. Thank you, Brady.
Yes, thank you.
Those are, by the way, those are the questions we love.
That's a good question.
Yeah, those are the questions we love. Alright, this is from Fluffy. "How should the trading skill be used? I've been conflicted on letting players use it to get things for lower prices, à la Haggle, as that should be left for a fixer. The descriptions of the skill's base seem to suggest otherwise, which is, which is why I'm confused." Fluffy.
So here I would, uh, I wouldn't let them duplicate the Hagel result. Um, because Hagel is built on top of trading in the first place. The trading skill is, uh, I mean, it's useful for, hey, I wanna trade this for that. Uh, and they might not want it. But that trading skill might come in to make that deal happen in the first place. I think one of the interesting parts about it is that you can, um, you can make the world more, um, more like, oh, I want anything that you have, you, you alter you this for that. With the trading skill, you can make more people available to trade. The Hagel skill is sort of an extras on top of that, like they'll do special deals, right? I think that's the, I mean, it's the difference between the play instrument skill and the play instrument skill when you're a rocker boy, it is to a context. Um, I hope that answers your question. Uh, there are some probably conflicting sentences. However, I, I think it's pretty clear which of the sentences is meant to be a flavor sentence, which the sentence is meant to be a rules. Um, so you know, rules text.
Well, yeah, mechanically, if the fixer uses Hagel, they get to use their role, uh, ability, their role number, uh, stat number in addition to whatever trading that they have. So, so that's what differentiates the fixer is like, they get a plus four at starting level, at starting characters, they get a plus four to trading, basically is what Hagel means. Um, yeah, but also the thing about trading is if you're not a fixer, why would, why does some, why should somebody do business with you? Why should somebody do business with your character? Why, why should they believe that what you have is worth of any value? And maybe that's where trading can come in, where you're basically saying, hey stranger, I'm not a fixer, uh, because you don't know who I am. You, you would know if I'm a fixer or you would actually hear about me. I'm just a random person with an object that I want to trade.
Right. And it's different if they come to you being like, hey, I wanna trade. Um, and there, uh, if you come to them, there's a totally different situation. You're trying to sell them on something almost. And, uh, that would be a way to do it. Of course, there are people that would use persuasion to try to do the same thing, right? Um,
I think you, you use persuasion if the guy doesn't wanna trade with you. Then it's like you're persuading him to actually go against his instinct and actually trade with you.
I, I think it's fine to have skills that overlap.
Yeah, it's gonna happen no matter what.
Gonna happen in a system with this many skills and a system that's trying to just make sure that you can roleplay these things through mechanical sense if you want. Um, I think it's a very special kind of character that doesn't have anything in fixer and wants to, uh, take a lot of the trading skill. Um, I think it's an interesting idea. Uh, and, uh, I hope that is a good enough answer to give that area a, um, uh, a nice way to play it.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yeah, it's a, you know, I would also say just do whatever fits your table. You know, when you guys are playing your game and you're trying to make decisions, uh, don't, don't like sit there and try to figure out, is trading better? Is this better? Is persuasion? Just pick one. Yeah, just do it. Pick one and, and keep it going. Um, if somebody makes a character that's not a fixer and they take seven in trading, is seven or six the max at character creation?
Six, I believe.
I believe it's six, yeah. They take six in trading. Okay, they're, they're sending you a message. They're saying like, look, I want to be able to trade with people.
Right.
So as the game master, I would just take that as like, okay, you're not making a fixer, so you're not gonna be better than fixers at trading. But, you know, people might take a look at your stuff because you have, you have six in trade.
As a, maybe they're getting it as a, uh, a defense against a fixer using their skill on them. You know what I mean?
Uh, Yeah, cause it is an opposing role, right?
It is, it is an opposing role. Maybe it's just that I don't wanna get scammed, so I'm gonna increase my defense against this. Somebody's like, sure, I'll buy it. I'm the only person here that's gonna buy it and, uh,
Yeah.
I don't think it's worth what you think it's worth. They'll pay you twenty percent less, you know, and then they roll their operator and you roll your trading and you're able to defend against that. And they're like, okay, I guess, never mind.
Yeah, you see, you see past their sales techniques. You're like, oh, you're desperate. You're trying to get rid of this thing and you're trying to convince me that you're not, you know? So yeah, that's good. There you go, Fluffy. I hope that answered your question. Last question on the docket. James, thoughts on behind not implementing half cover? For those of you that don't know the golden rule of cover in Cyberpunk Red, if any part of your body is visible to the attacker, then you are no longer in cover, zero cover. There's no half, there's no medium, there's no a little bit, none of that. Uh, it makes everything a lot simpler to, there's no interpretation, you know, are you hidden? Are you not? That's what matters. Uh, so yeah, James, tell me your insight.
Okay, um, half cover. Um, or partial cover more of and general. Um, so in any game of, uh, well, there's a reason why games that involve guns, um, play very differently to games that don't involve guns. Um, you know, you'll notice this in, there's a lot of DND players that are like, oh man, I would, the second they have a gunslinger class, you know, that's a totally different thing. And now, and now they introduce, you'll notice in the, um, in a lot of, uh, homebrew that tries to introduce guns into systems without guns, it often mechanically, uh, they often add a bunch of mechanics. They just throw mechanics at the wall, right? Um, you're like, oh, I need a reloading skill check now, right? Something like that. Um, and, uh, one of the reasons is that, uh, it changes the way the player sees the world. Um, because they start looking for half cover and full cover. They'll always want full cover. Your player, from a player perspective, will always want full cover. And I guess the, the meaning, the implementation that uh, a lot of people are going is like, oh, well, it's not full cover, it's half cover, uh, as a games master. But the player will always want full cover and they will seek it out in their gameplay, right? That slows down your experience. The player will change how they play to meet the new home rule of, oh, I need full cover and I have cover. Um, and because of this, it's a, it, there's a level of like the player going, but I'm an action hero, right? Uh, we're not playing Sniper Elite right now. We're playing Band of Brothers or something. Um, we're, uh, I should be able to flip over a table and be in cover behind it. Uh, and then, uh, and then, um, be in cover. Um, it also means that the game privileges flanking over cover taking.
And grenades.
Uh, yes, and grenades. Uh, you'll notice that it also without half cover privileges, like people are higher up on the initiative queue. Uh, because they can hold their action to shoot them when they come out of cover, right? This creates an interesting, like, okay, we have the advantage, cause we have momentum, this momentum idea. And it puts it in with very little work. Um, a lot of times you'll, you'll see people, if they misinterpret the cover rule, um, they'll think it's some sort of conga line. Um, right? Well, I'll hold action to hold action, but you can't hold action till the next round. You gotta act in the moment, right? You gotta be cyberpunk. You have to be action right now. Let's do it. Uh, if you're having a standoff, you're having a momentary standoff in a fight. So the reason why no partial cover is because this, it creates games that are more action oriented. Uh, because just sitting behind cover and popping out to shoot, right? That's, that's like this less cyberpunk.
Yeah, um, I've, I've
Yeah, that's my short version. Um, I recommend, uh, if you're considering why no partial cover, might not hurt to try playing with partial cover. Um, you will find that it slows down your game or you will find that players like they normally do, don't even interact with cover in the first place. Um, it's there so that when a player decides to interact with cover, it's powerful as a battlefield tool. Um, but, uh, other than that, it's, it's a way of showing that some people are like smart, playing smart when they have the advantage. Um, you can still be outflanked and, you know, outmaneuvered, even if you are taking cover. Uh, and, uh, I mean, it's also easier to run.
Yeah.
Anyway, what, what, how do you feel? I, I feel like I've answered this question a couple of times in different ways.
Yeah, many times, many times.
Trying to find the right way to answer it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just one of those things that's always gonna pop up because it's a major mechanic in combat. And as you said, this is a gun game, uh, there's guns in Cyberpunk, so, uh, there has to be ways to do it. I've found that, you know, having the golden rule of cover made things a lot more simpler. Uh, there's a lot less interpretation of whether you are in cover or not. And, you know, claiming and telling the game master, I finished my turn behind cover, lets the game master know that you're fully behind cover at the end of your turn. And no one is safe. It's not like behind, being behind cover ha, is gonna make you safe. Some people have said like, oh, what if there's a stalemate? It's like, no, there's always some kind of counter. That's actually very easy to implement, like a hand grenade or running up to the enemy combatant and hitting them with a melee attack. You know, you can't be safe from a katana.
Or even running around to shoot them sideways.
Exactly, or fl, or the obvious flanking. Yeah, yeah. So the, there's that. I wouldn't be too worried about it. I am curious to ask you, in your testing, did you guys ever try to think like, okay, maybe we can give like plus two SP, temporary SP? If you're behind half cover or anything like that, did that ever like fly around in the studio?
The very quickly it becomes a thing that you forget. And rules that you forget about because they're so wrapped up in playing the rest of the game are things that can get streamlined.
Hmm.
Um, you know what I mean? Like, what if we acted as your initiative was plus two higher? When you were running on for a turn instead of walking? You know what I mean? It's the stuff that like, you'd have to remember it and you'd have to get used to it to even use it. A new player never getting that rule right in their first session.
No, you're absolutely right.
You're either in and cover or you're not in cover. If you're in cover, you're behind something that can stop a bullet. They go, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, you're right about forgetting rules and, you know, what if the most disastrous thing happens where a character dies and then they remember later, oh my God, I had plus two SP that I completely forgot about. Now everybody feels bad, it doesn't make sense, the game sucks. Like, that's like one of the worst things that can happen. So, um, yeah, that's definitely it. But, um, I also have a video out there. This is from Jay, by the way. Uh, they just said Jay, their name is Jay. Uh, so many Jays out there.
A lot of Jays.
I do have a video about combat, um, where I talk about it in depth and then James and I even did a video. Uh, one of the Night City, was it one of the Night City Council episodes? One of the first ones?
We started doing that.
Uh, we've touched this subject like at least three, four, five ti, I mean, this feels like we keep coming back to it. So I have plenty of content out there where we cover this. So, yeah. I also have actual plays. You can see how we do combat in the actual plays and stuff like that. If you wanna get insight on how it's done and implemented. So there's that. Okay?
Anyway.
Alright.
It's a good, it's, of, of course, it doesn't mean it's not a good question. It's a good question.
Yeah.
Um, one of the, it is one of the things that is new about the system, a way to handle cover that is not, um, gonna slow down your gameplay. And it's an intentional design decision, of course. Uh, toward, uh, toward a more action oriented game.
Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, let's, uh, so that's it for the questions. Once, uh, once again, if you wanna submit your questions, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com in the subject, say it's for the Night City Council. And I'll be glad to add it to the list. We have a little bit of time left. I wanted to ask you, since we have a little bit of time left, what have you been playing? What's going on?
Oh, I have been playing, um, I've been trying to get out there with my own personal, uh, TRPG group. Been playing some prototypes and working on, uh, then also, uh, we've been playing a campaign of, um, uh, kids on brooms.
Oh, nice. Like kids on bikes, but it's witches or something?
It's kinda, you know, Harry Potter-y inspired.
That's dope.
It's fun, uh, it's light, you know, we just got a bunch of new people in, uh, I, I just got two new members in my group, so we're trying to, you know, train them up and it's a, because it's a Powered by the Apocalypse game, it's a great like first game that's not DND. Um, for people that were like casually into DND. Just to show them there are things that are DND before, you know, forcing them to play Cyberpunk.
That's one of the best, like things I'm, that's one of the things I'm so grateful for. I mean, it's great if DND is your first game. You know, I'm not gonna knock on that or anything, but I was happy that DND wasn't my first game. So I could see like, you know, there's other options out there and not be afraid to try other games out.
Hey, um, being curious is a, that's a, that's a, that good character trait.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, exactly.
They'll always like end up well, most of the time.
Yeah, exactly.
Most of the time.
Most of the time.
I don't know. No cosmic horror stuff, you know?
Not yet.
Cosmic horror setting.
Yeah.
Don't be curious in that case.
Uh, no, that's curiosity kills the cat. Is that what it's say?
I, I feel like it, uh, you end up, uh, you end up going insane, but fair enough.
Yeah.
Uh, anyway, um, yeah, that's what I've been playing. What do you, what have you been, uh, you said you haven't gotten to play Cyberpunk lately, so you must've been doing something else.
I know, I'm bummed out. I haven't been able to, it was my son's birthday, so I was like really, uh, focused on that these last couple of weeks. Um, and then also it's really diff, yeah, thank you. Uh, it's also really difficult to get five adults, uh, to meet on the same day, same time, same place. Um, yeah, I'm sure you guys all know about that. So there's, there's that. Um, my two groups haven't played in a little while. I was sent a, uh, preview of, uh, a Kickstarter for a Shadowrun game. It's a card game. Uh, yesterday I tested it out with my buddy with Arnog. We played a couple of games. Uh, I don't wanna give out my full review just yet, but, um, I wanna do some more testing, uh, outside of two players. I'm thinking maybe two players is not the ideal way to play the game. So I'm gonna do some testing with some more people, see how it is. They wanted me to take a look at it. Um, so if you guys see a review, that means I liked it a little bit. If you don't see a review, that means, uh, I wasn't a big fan of it. But it is what it is. There's, there's thousands of games out there who, you know, um, maybe you'll like it. You're different than me. Everybody's tastes are different. So, um, but yeah, other than that, um, not much, uh, not much else. Uh, I've sadly not been able to play, been painting. Oh, I did introduce my son to playing, uh, with dice, basically. So I, uh, introduced him, I was like, this is a D twenty, this is a D six. And he's like, I just wanna throw them on the table, but I introduced him to like role playing a little bit. Where I was like, let's tell a story and roll dice to see whether good things or bad things happen to the characters in the story.
There are a lot of really good role playing games targeted at that market, like getting people who are getting younger humans into, into games.
Yeah.
And a lot do a good job.
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I tried it out. I, I was like, you know, just to introduce them to what it is. And then the other day- And then the other day, he was like, dad, let's tell stories with dice. And I was like, oh, here we go.
That's why you didn't, okay, now I understand why you. Edgerunner anime, you have a good.
Yeah, exactly, I've been, I've been telling stories with my son. By the way, he's getting anxious, he just opened the door, you missed it, he opened it and closed it real quick.
Fair enough, fair enough.
So, yeah.
We should probably call it, uh, call it adjourned.
Yeah, we uh, we did an hour, ten minutes shy of it, I think that's good enough. Uh, for all of our folks out there, hey, first of all, we want to thank you guys so much for continuing to support the show, continuing to support the hobby. Um, tell your friends about the anime, tell your friends about the game, let's get some more people. On this train, baby. And and that's it, anything you want to tell the fine people before we sign off?
No, thanks for watching, um, hope you have fun. Enjoy Edgerunners and uh, send us some more questions, real thinkers, we need them.
Yep, exactly, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com, that's where you could send it, thank you all. Night City Council is adjourned. Ladies and ge- ladies and gentlemen and chumbas, we'll see you on the next one, thank you so much, take care, bye bye.